Yeah, two minutes.
Well, these last two years have been really low because of COVID.
I was listening and they kept on saying.
Probably raised first ever, first relief appearance, first relief.
Oh, I should tell me.
My words are reaching other suffering souls out there.
All right.
I've been painting.
No worries.
It's black, kind of a dark gray. I'd like to get a window.
Good times.
My house needs to be painted.
I can.
Hi.
I can do the front door. You really needed it that way.
My neighbor painted the front door.
Oh. I like, I like really nice, happy colors. The candy ones, you have orange, green. Ours was red. So. And we have, we do have a executive session.
They had a garage. It's really hard for me to do my painting because we don't have a garage, so.
I don't, I think I'll get a check. I don't think we have one this month, just had it last month. I'm going to call the Montesano City Council meeting for October 11th to order. If you all staff with me for the flag ceremony. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this whole liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call, roll call? Councilman Tremblow?
Here.
Councilman Scaramucca?
Here.
Councilman Coop?
Here.
Councilman Carl?
Here.
Councilwoman Jester?
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Here.
We are at approval.
Councilman Bryson's here.
Councilman Bryson.
He just showed up.
Thank you, Councilman Bryson. We are at approval of bills.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the bills as audited. Would the Finance Committee like to give a report?
Eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, seventy-one cents. The largest bill, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents to Roggins. Mind you, that's broken out into four hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents for TIB. And two hundred and thirty-three thousand of that is the water main upgrade. The other one goes to crack ceiling, which is a TIB funded project for ninety-four thousand, thirty dollars and sixty-four cents.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the bills are approved as audited. We are at approval of minutes.
A second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. Are there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are at the first public comment of the meeting. Is there anyone in the, in the audience that would like to have a public comment? While he's turning on the mic, I'll just introduce him as Dick Stone of Montesano, former mayor.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Dick Stone and here tonight, I am on behalf of the Montesano Community Center, also known as the Senior Center, and it's budget season. And so I'm here to request an increase in our allocation from fifteen thousand a year to twenty thousand a year. So as seniors age in our, in our population and in our community, a couple of things happen. Friends pass away, families move away, the world gets smaller. And I was really struck by this with my mom, who lived down in California. And I watched her as she got older and her, just her world just got smaller and smaller. And when that happens, you have depression, poor nutrition, and just a decline in the quality of life of our seniors. And our job at the Montesano Community Center is to make that not happen for as many of our seniors as we can do. And so we do a couple of things to sort of alleviate the problem. One is we have our senior nutrition program. Another one is we provide an opportunity for socialization. And we also provide an opportunity for activities, for learning opportunities, for exercise and things like that. And all of those are designed to improve the quality of life for our seniors and to offset these other things that happen to people as some of us grow older. And so prior to the pandemic, we were serving about mid forty people lunches a day, nearly all of those in the, in the Senior Center. We had a few takeout meals. When the pandemic hit, we went to takeout only and we thought, man, we're going to be down to fifteen or twenty people at the most. And, and within two weeks after going to takeout only, we were serving over eighty lunches a day. And we've continued at those high numbers. We started with having in-person lunches back in May. And about twenty-five percent of the lunches that we're serving now are in our dining room. And still about seventy-five percent of the lunches we serve are going out with takeout. We'd love to have more people come in and join us and be part of the, the in-person part of that because of the socialization and the opportunity of it. And we've had high school friends that have made dates to be there once a week to get together. We have games, we have trivia, we have karaoke. When we, when we can get enough people there to make that all work out. So the, we have the nutrition, we have the socialization. We just had a board meeting today and we have somebody coming in from the Olympic Area Agency on Aging once a month to talk about issues, Medicare signups and that kind of stuff. We have somebody else that's coming in from disabled American veterans who will talk to folks about other issues and aging and that sort of thing. So while the pandemic has greatly increased our numbers and, and we are grateful for that, that's what we do. We want to serve people. It comes at a cost and that cost is, we haven't been able to do a bunch of our fundraising that we typically would have done. We had a senior, a Senior Center auction each May that was generating about twenty thousand dollars a year. We haven't been able to have that for three years. We used to have a number of rentals of our facility. We used to have a lot of small fundraisers, all designed to help us balance the budget. And we haven't been able to have many of those over the last three years. We're starting to ease back in, but like I said, we still haven't gotten the people back in the building. The senior population is a little hesitant to start coming around too much, so. Given that, that our costs have gone up because to takeout, you've got all the paper products and that kind of stuff. With the big increase in the number of meals we've served, we've had to add hours to our staff to make everything work out. And so between the, those increased costs and the fact that we haven't been able to get our, some of our fundraising, we're coming to you to ask for an increase in what the city has done for us. And we, we know that money is always tight in the city government. And we appreciate what we get, but we like a little bit more. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. If you have any questions that you think of after I'm gone, feel free to contact me or come down to the Senior Center for lunch and we can talk to you about what we do and how we do it. We get rave reviews for our meals. And so anyhow, thank you for the opportunity to speak and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, so we don't usually do questions at public comments, so what, but I have your email and I'll shoot it out to everybody. And so that if anybody has any questions that they want to ask, then if there's any answers that you think is pertinent, then you could send it to everyone. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Okay. Then there will be another opportunity later in this meeting if anyone would like to do that. Did any of the committees meet in between the last meeting and this meeting? Would you like to make your report?
I can't. Public Works met last Wednesday. I've, there were several topics, but I'm going to speak on two. The first one is a previous meeting I announced that there was a request for a property line variance. That has been at least temporarily withdrawn at this point. Secondly, a big topic, we have West Pioneer Reconstruction that's coming up. Originally it was, the construction phase was the calendar year of 2025. And our funding source asked us to move it forward to 2024. Now we're being asked to move it forward to the year 2023. It's, it's big. The first hurdle we have to get through is right away acquisition, temporary and permanent. And if we make it by February, there's a strong chance we could do construction this coming summer. But in a perfect world, we would love to procure the funds, get the bids, and then postpone construction until 2024. So that's, that's the perfect world, but more to come later, that's it.
Thank you. Is there any, were there any other committees that met in the interim? Okay, I'm going to move forward then. There is no old business. We are going to go into a very brief executive session, probably five minutes. It is for personnel issues. Okay, we are back on the record and, um, thank you. I would be entertaining a motion.
I'd move to offer the eighty percent fire chief job to Dave Booze at a salary of eighty-one thousand a year and prorated benefit package. Also subject to background check and verification of references.
Second.
Um, what I heard was that, that the motion was to confirm the offer of employment made by the mayor for the identifica, the, the stated renumeration and qualifications to occur
On January first.
January first of 2023. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, welcome. And unusually, if you would like to say a few things to the council, you are welcome to or.
So Dave Booze, I know most of you and it's been, no perfect timing to get these done. I'm not in a position for at least another year to take this on at a hundred percent role. So I know Chief Vance has done a fantastic job keeping the park moving. Captain Smith is a pretty amazing asset to have, is probably doing good as, as good as anybody can do. So yeah, I, we're going to, I'm really excited about this. It's going to be good, I have pretty heavy operations, pretty heavy training, pretty good in HR. Chief Vance has been walking through some of the budget stuff today. We're doing that over the next two months so I can hit the ground and be, you know. So if you have any questions to reach out, I'm glad to be here, it's pretty exciting.
Thank you. All right, with that good news, we're going to go ahead and move on to the budget review, which is also good news. This will be police, fire, and forest. Who would like to go first? Let's see.
All right, so the 405 is, is Forest. We're right at the end, the back of your budget presentation stuff in the packet. Next year, our operation, level of operations is quite a bit down from what it is this year. This year, as you know, we, we harvested two timber sales. We went, we went ahead and harvested our 2023 timber sale this year. So next year, there'll be no timber sale revenue budgeted. There will be some, the interlocal agreement, a revenue budgeted to forty-five thousand dollars that we typically budget for the services that we provide to Hoquim and Aberdeen. As far as the expense side goes, the only real expense we'll have next year, the major expense is going to be reforestation, tree planting. We logged about a hundred and fifty acres this year and so we'll have to get that planted. So our, our tree planting budget for next year is about twice, double what it typically is. That's because we're, we're planting twice as many trees and twice as many acres. Other than that, we just wanted to let the new forester have a lot of time to spend getting to know his forest. And so hopefully this level of activity on the forest next year will allow him to, or her to spend some time and really get, get familiar with all the different portions of our forest and make up his or her own plans as to what they'd like to do. So any questions with that?
Does the Forest Committee have anything else they want to add?
No, we do hope to acquire, you know, state budgets permitting, we do hope to acquire some more property next year. And it should come at no additional cost. The monies that we spent this year buying forest should go as our, as our contributing portion to the, to that new acquisition. So if the state capital budget does well, then we will add another two hundred and forty acres to the forest next year, which is pretty exciting, I think.
Do you want to tell them a little bit about that grant program?
You know, we've, we've had it before you a couple of times. We approved some monies for the grant writer to, to prepare the grant for us. And then we went ahead and, and had a resolution passed by you to, in support of our pursuing that grant. And so there's five different applications this year. Last year, or two years ago, we had this cycle, there was about fifteen applicants and we didn't apply at that time. But this time we did apply and there's only five applicants. And we're hoping that the state will fund and we're number one. We're the top pick, so.
Since they've done anything.
If any money gets funded, we should get it.
Yeah. All right, any questions at all about the forest budget? Okay, and we may have a little bit change. I think, I don't know if she reflected this or not, but we may, the bridge fund may be adjusted a little bit because of a couple of shortfalls in different parts of this year's budget. But you'll hear about that over the next couple of months. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll sit that down. I'm going to start with the chief's budget. Fuel, five twenty-one is the block quarter section. You guys want to be there? I'm going to highlight this. I would tell you that the budget sort of wages increase and benefits increases is pretty much the same as it was last year. We are funding a chief, a lieutenant, six officers, a clerk, a half a clerk, and a part of the forester. The things that we need to be aware of, definitely as you all know, just beating the world today, as our gas prices are up, so we increased our, our fuel costs. The other thing that, every year we have in the budget, a patrol vehicle. As, as the supply and demand goes, we are having trouble getting those. So we ordered one last December with our last, with this year's budget. We still have not received that vehicle. We're hoping to receive it during the next couple of weeks. And to include next year's vehicle. If we start to order even right now, we're not sure if we're going to get one for next year, so. And having said that, there are ten dollars more supplying them. So the fifty-two or fifty-four thousand dollars that we have in the budget is a shortfall. I talked to a direction about it and you're going to make some adjustments there. But short of those items, those are really the highlights of the complete budget. Any questions?
None? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to fire then.
Okay. Fire. I should say the same thing about fire. We, so you know, it's one of the, one of the big things in staffing. So in the budgets, we have, we have budget for a chief, for captains, and two daytime positions. So that's a total of seven. Short, again, short of wages and benefits, the budget is almost identical to last year. One of the things that we did do is, of course, we have a cadet program going this year. As flat as we have the last four or five years. It was budgeted up from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand. The school has given us an extra five thousand dollars. One of the things that that cadet program was supposed to be doing throughout the years was helping to replace bunker gear that needs to be replaced on a, on a rolling, you know, year-to-year basis. And we haven't done that. So one of the things that me and Gretchen did was we actually put a line item in there for bunker gear replacement. And so we actually have fifteen of our twenty-five thousand dollars set aside for that. And that's really going to give us, I think it's about four and a half, four and a half sets a year, four and a half, five sets a year. So a year, so I think that's actually a really good start to get going. Some of the things that are rising, horizon is our SCVAs and some other equipment that we replaced in the years past. Those will be coming up in the next three to five years. So I would say that as we keep on going with our budgets, we need to start consciously thinking about those items coming forward and how we're going to fund those items as well, so. Again, fuel costs and then the exciting part is that down in debt services, we actually paid off a couple of our debts this year, so, at 2022. So that does help the budget a little bit. We're actually, I think we're asking for, from three seventy-five to four twenty-five from the general fund. But we also believe that we've been actually recouping a lot more of those costs with our ambulance billing, which we changed this year to system design. And we see that coming in on a more regular basis. And it's only about a, a month out maybe?
Uh, less than a month out.
Less than a month out. So as we are, as we are doing transports and as we are billing, we're getting that information and we're getting it a lot faster. So we have more of a cash flow, steady cash flow going that way. So we're, we're happy with, with ways of going so far. So other than that, is there any question?
Chief, when you said bunker equipment.
Bunker gear, yes.
Well, I don't know what that means.
Oh, it's the gear they wear in fire. It's, it's the pants and the coats and each set is roughly about thirty-eight hundred dollars. It's boots, it's pants, it's the, it's the coat, and it's fire.
The standard uniform?
It is, well, it is standard firefighting uniform, yes. Yes, and I'd say it's about thirty-eight to four thousand dollars per set. And, and so one thing, I guess this is a learned thing for me as well, but you know, they have a set that they wear. We have fire, they get it all wet and blah, 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 they have to get it dried out and cleaned out. They have to have another set just in case we have another fire. So they're using secondary sets and we need to continue that process of replacing those. So, and then there's a lifespan in that. Ten years, ten years lifespan. So and I think we're probably, we might be about six into our, into our set that we have right now. So like I said, we need to start rolling those and keeping those things. Because if not, just like our SCVAs and our bunker gear, those are big ticket items when all of a sudden we say we have to replace twenty sets, you know, and all that stuff. So it needs to be an ongoing thing. It needs to be, we need to really look at it for a while to make sure that we can do that.
Those vehicles holding up?
Fire vehicles? Well, they're, they're pretty good. This year we did, we did do some great, one of the great things. We did replace tires on a couple of those vehicles. Some of those tires were twenty years old. Now granted, they might have only had ten thousand miles on them, but we still, it's one of those things, they're out of, you know, they need to be replaced. We need to make sure that we're not going to blow a tire going down the third or two something. And so, and those are big costs, you know, that's why this, this can has been kicked down the road many, many years. Like, oh, we can do that later. You know, we're talking five to seven thousand dollars for a set of tires for a vehicle. So at this point, I believe they're doing all right. That's another thing, our ambulances are going to, we need to start looking at those replacements times for the ambulances that are going through the process, so.
Any other question? Yes.
We're not collecting fees for fire permits this year, or what?
I know, I saw that. I don't know why we're not, I, I think we're collecting fees for, maybe we didn't do it in 2020 and 2021.
I don't know that. I mean, I.
I don't know either, I can't remember.
I think we did, I think if people came for a fire permit, we did collect fees. But yeah, I'm not sure if that, might, might be a typo, might be near.
No, no worries.
For either Chief Vance or soon to be Chief Booth, the supply chain issues, how are they impacting equipment replacements, whether it be vehicles or just day-to-day stuff that needs to be replaced?
Yeah. You know, we're finding, there are certain things, actually, you know, for a while there we were having trouble finding saline or, or drip, or, yeah. And so we had to go to a different route. There are some things that are having, we are having trouble seeing. But as far as rubber gloves and things like that, we're able to get those. Medications, we were having to do some, some searching for some certain things and so on and so forth. Captain Smith has been doing a great job making sure that we have everything. But yeah, there are some things that are, that the supply chain is slowing down. So, and of course, everything has expiration. We've also, I believe there, we have got some authorization from Dr. Buck, who oversees all of our medical stuff, to use things past expiration for up to another three or six months or something to that effect. But we have got some authorization for those. But yes, the supply chain is creating an issue. It's creating an issue there.
You mentioned ambulance replacement eventual, ambulance replacement. How far out are those usually, and how far out are they now with?
Well, we have, so we have three, right? So we rotate them. We have one that's our first out, we have one that's our transport, and then we have one that's our backup. And I would say that we are in, in the next three to five years again, if not two to three years. I mean, you know, those, but in the next couple of years, we need to start doing that. And we're talking, I believe we're talking, I'm going to estimate, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an ambulance. And, and that's, you know, that's a major portion of our EMS. That's, that's what they do. So, yeah.
And once ordered, we're talking-
Time frame?
Yeah.
Well, right now, with the supply chain, I'm not sure, right? And they build them, right? So they build, you buy the, you buy the chassis, and then you put the box on it, and, and yeah, so it's built. So I don't think we've looked into that, that we see exactly where that supply chain issue is going. But again, it's something that now, coming in the next couple of years, we really need to be paying attention to those.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Mr. Booth will do that.
So the tradition has been that we buy engines and ambulances through the levy. And the levy, the one that we have in existence right now is up, I believe, in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. So the next levy would be voted on in twenty-four, twenty-five, or, and in effect in twenty-six. And so that's the timeframe that he's describing. It will, it will not technically come out of, I mean, technically will come out of our budget, but, but it's not going to come out of a budgetary item that you're going to actually allocate. And so I assume this next year is twenty twenty-three, so I assume by twenty twenty-four we'll be at figuring out what the specs are for that. It was twenty sixteen, that's when we did it. So, so we have till twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The next thing I was just going to say is, I just want to, as you can see, we increased the general fund contribution into the fire department by five point three percent because it had not been increased for at least three years. And the last thing is, as you, you, just to answer a question that wasn't asked, the MONI rehab has obvious, the fire there has obviously meant less, no calls for MONI rehab. But the interesting thing is that the, there have, the, our department has picked up additional calls elsewhere, so the call volume has not decreased. And so while the expectation was there was going to be an impact on the budget based on the ambulance calls, at least right now, there is, it's probably, it may be not any impact. It may be that we pick up the extra calls from the hospital and, and continue. So we'll see how things go. Any other questions based on what I just said?
So we rely on the levy passing to be able to get the vehicles?
New, new vehicles.
Okay. Have we ever had an issue with it passing in the past?
Not passing?
Not, yeah, not passing in the past.
No.
Okay.
I don't think there's been ever a levy put to the citizens of the city of Montesano on fire and EMS that has not passed.
And as a levy, it's a straight fifty plus one, right? It's not a super?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And I think not only an ambulance, but also a ladder truck is, is in the near future because our ladder truck is twenty-five years old. And like I say, it, it has a end of life, even though it might not be utilized and ran, ran right, it is still utilized, it is still twenty-five years old, and it still needs to be replaced.
The city levy, remember, is, it has hierarchy, right? So there are some people that will, so out of every dollar that is collected on property value, on property taxes, certain, certain jurisdictions will take the first cut, like the hospital district will get first priority. We take higher priority than the library district. And so there, there are different levels of where that falls. And so we actually have the capacity to do more taxes from the, the voters that actually given us a higher capacity to take money than what we actually were able to take because of the way that hierarchy felt in the last levy. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, that's my agenda. We are now, so this is the last budget review as to specific departments. CFO, at the next meeting, will do a generalized overview of all, we'll get into the nitty-gritty. So please review your budgets for any questions. We'll need to make determinations on any adjustments, and then we'll have the public readings on the first and second of meetings of November and second reading. And the expectation is passage on the first of meeting of December. So any questions, anything you want to ask, this, this is, we're getting to that edge. So we're moving on to ordinances and resolutions. This is a resolution of sports officials that I was requested to raise, and it's resolution number nine nine five. Would you like to?
Doesn't matter. You don't have to read the whole thing.
Let me do the motion.
I'll move to nine nine what?
Five.
Move to the top resolution, nine nine five.
Second.
There is a motion in the second to approve the resolution nine nine five. Is there, before we do that, I do want to read it. Would you like to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to read it, because I think it has lots of good things that people should be aware of. A resolu, this is a resolution of the City Council of Montesano recognizing our community is better served with a healthy sports environment and urgent need for youth soccer, sports, sorry, officials. Whereas sports officials fill a critical role to make sure that sports are fairly played, well-managed, and safe for the players, coaches, and spectators. And whereas there is a major shortage of youth sports referees both locally and nationally, and whereas the National Federation of State High School Association indicates that approximately fifty thousand high school referees, twenty percent of all officials quit between two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty-one. And Washington Officials Association reports a loss of eight hundred sports officials. And whereas the culture of conflict and disrespect toward authority has created a toxic atmosphere in youth sports. And whereas, according to the National Association of Sports Officials, eighty-seven percent of the roughly seventeen thousand officials who were surveyed in two thousand seventeen said they had suffered verbal abuse in their role as officials. Thirteen percent said that they had been physically assaulted during or around a game, and that these same officials reported that forty percent believe that parents were the primary agitators with unsportsmanlike conduct. And whereas the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association over the last year states five hundred and eight player and coach ejections have occurred from games, which is a significant and troubling increase in the culture of conflict and disrespect. And whereas the purpose of youth sports is to help youth learn how to be a better person, teammates, and athletes through the consequences of their behavior and the role modeling in the adults who surround them. And whereas a healthy team sport environment allows the players, coaches, and spectators to learn and observe lessons about honesty, integrity, dedication, and teamwork, which creates good citizens and supports our democracy. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Montesano City Council recognizes that our community is better served with a healthy sports environment, and such reflects an urgent need for youth sports officials. It now calls upon parents, coaches, and athletes in youth sports to demonstrate the values and ideals of youth sports and sportsmanship, and to display respect for those doing the difficult job of officiating. Any discussion?
I'm the one that brought this forward to the mayor. It's a very similar resolution that was passed by the Snohomish County Council. As you all know, that's what I do for kind of a living. So what's happened is, we've been moving games, canceling games. You've noticed a lot more Thursday night football games, Saturday afternoon football games. That's just because we just can't cover things. And the biggest thing that's happening is people just don't want to do it, because as you're walking it out, it's obviously the referee's fault because they put on the stripes, just like any other, not position of power, but that's everybody else's fault. So there is a national push in the say yes to officiating world. I can tell you that what's really spurred this on is last year in the junior high basketball game where the fan came out of the stands and physically assaulted the referee in King County and sent him to the hospital with a broken jaw, broken nose, and six broken ribs. That's where most of this is stemming from. So it's the littlest piece that we can do to try and help out, and I would ask for your support.
Any further questions or discussion?
Well, I find myself in a somewhat hypocritical position as I spent several minutes criticizing officials during Friday night's football broadcast, but we, we all know just how much I love watching youth sports and how much my kids loved playing youth sports, and I know a lot of us in this room enjoyed it, both watching our kids and playing it ourselves. And that doesn't happen without the officials. I don't know why it has seemed to have ratcheted up over the last four or five years, the level of disrespect that has gone from shouting displeasure at a call to verbally berating and then physically assaulting. I don't know why that is. I know that I wouldn't want to put up with it, so I respect the people that do, that are willing to go out there and do it. It's not an easy job. Anyone who has done it, even at the level of just doing it for a rec soccer game, knows it's not easy. I mean, just running up and down the field is difficult. But it's, it's, people give another time and putting up with a lot. And it's, it's, these games don't happen, and the opportunities for our kids and the chance for us to escape for a few hours and enjoy watching our kids or watching a neighborhood or community event take place doesn't happen without those volunteers and people that are willing to, to step out there and do that. So I urge people to, to give them a break and realize they're doing a tough job and doing the best they can, just like, and appreciate them for what they're doing.
Thank you.
I remember when my son played baseball when he was younger, and they had a posting at the field saying, here's what we require from, you know, the parents and the coaches and the kids. Do they have postings at the high school regarding, you know, here's how you should be?
They've done some public address announcements about it, and so there's, there's the campaign that's out there.
So they have done something at the school, talking to the kids?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Any further? Without any objection, I would suggest that perhaps we could post this resolution for the next year through twenty twenty-three at our parks. We obviously can't do that at the schools, but we certainly can put them on signs and put them in our fields. Okay. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We are at public comment once more. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment at this time? Hearing done, we're moving on to council comments. Councilwoman Thomas, would you like to start?
Excuse me. Is there an adjutant?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Does there need to be an easement on the agenda?
Is there an adjutant?
Nope. I couldn't wait.
Super first.
Okay. Well, that's good, because we're at the end of the meeting, so that would have been challenging. Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
I just wanted to say thank you to Dick Stone. He's not here now, he left, but my family has gone to the Montesano Community Center quite a bit during the pandemic, and I can tell you that the food is wonderful. They serve our community really well, and I've seen Vell there many times. And it's the cheapest meal in town.
Councilwoman Scaramucca.
I would like to thank the Senior Center for the tremendous job they do. Yeah, our fam, my family's aging, and my uncle, you get a meal delivered to him every day from, well, not every day, five days a week from the Senior Center. And that meal is, is his lunch, and a lot of times it's his dinner also, so you get an idea of his age. Secondly, I'd like to tell everyone, the, the next five days is going to be nice weather, and I say it many times, to get outside and enjoy yourself and play. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman.
Welcome, Dave. Glad to have you join us here at the city. I think that's going to be a really good thing for our citizens. I hope it's a really good thing for you, too.
I echo that same sentiment that Councilman Bryson just said. I'll give you a welcome chief booze, though, so there's that for you. Thank you, Chief Vance, for the budget presentation, Lauren, for yours. No frills, but well done. And thank you for your support on the resolution.
Chief Booze, welcome. Chief Vance, thank you for all that you've done over the last, how long has it been? Two years. Appreciate you very much. And you and Lauren for the present, budget presentations. It's a great presentation from Mr. Stone. Appreciate all the Senior Center does. Heck of a Friday night for Montesano football, knocking off the number one team in the state. So first time in twelve year, or in ten years since that's happened. So homecoming's coming up as well. We are about a, what, week and a half away from homecoming twenty twenty-two. Would urge all the kids to be responsible, have a great time, and enjoy this.
Councilwoman.
Well, I, I wanted to mention a couple of things that I believe Dick Stone forgot when he was talking to us. First of all, he didn't mention that we're delivering to the homebound now. I know I have here, but I will just reiterate, since we're looking at this budget request. We had not delivered to the homebound before COVID started, but when COVID started, we just thought we really needed to do that, and we've continued that on, that we've made the decision to continue delivering meals to the homebound. And we do count that. It, it varies widely, but it's about six meals a day that we deliver. Sometimes it's as many as twelve, sometimes it's four. But I believe that's a super important component of what we're doing right now, is delivering to the homebound. Also, just wanted to say that as far as our employees go, we are stretched to the max, and we, we had to add a few hours to keep up with business, but we did not add any extra hours that if, if anyone, what, we have three paid staff, if any one of them need to be off for a day for anything, vacation, doctor's appointments, sick, whatever it might be, one of the board has to go in and volunteer and take their place and do their job. So that is how close to the bone that our staffing runs, just so you know. Yes, congratulations, Chief Booze. Thank you, Chief. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilman.
I'm especially looking forward to Chief Booze and his organizational and training and all those kinds of skills that he's going to bring to the table. It's a pretty exciting move for the Montesano Fire Department, and should be a great thing for, for our community to see that happen. Like to thank the Public Works Department for getting the striping done on the- done on the parking lot at the fire department today. Thank you, Mike. And second, thirdly, I'm really excited about Montesano's football team and their progress. They've done a great job. So, I'm looking forward to more games.
I think there's one on the 21st and one on the 28th. And so, the last home game will be on the 28th. And so, if you haven't made it yet, you've got two more shots. The 21st is going to be really hard to get into. And the parade is the 18th, if anybody's willing to risk rain or cold, or if we're really lucky, 80-degree weather on the corner of Beehive and, on the, on the intersection of our stoplight. The second thing I just wanted to mention was, I echo everybody in saying how delighted I am to hopefully get our departments back in, with a full crew of management team. I cannot, well, I always appreciate my department heads. They all go well beyond my expectations and my requests. But Chief Vance has had a, a, a good, a good, a good time over the past rough 18 months at the end of this year, and has been a great support. Last, but not least, I just wanted to let you guys know that effective November 1, all of the governor's orders, emergency orders are going to go away. That does not necessarily mean that other agencies' orders are going to go away, i.e. court systems and things of that nature, health orders that they make through whoever they're making it. So, but for the city council, what that means is the issue of telecasting. We are not into our new facility yet. But I, we'll be, we'll be staffing the issue on whether or not we want to go live, or if we want to do the recording, as we had previously suggested, giving Sean an opportunity not to come to this meeting every Tuesday that we're here. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I see.
Second.
There's a motion in second. Any, all those? Aye.
Aye.
Any-